Okay, it's 7:00 PM on March 20th, 2024. This is the town of Sherburne, Massachusetts zoning board of appeals. I'm the chair, Rick Novak. I'm joined by members Jonathan Fitch, Todd Labby, and Zach McBride. Tonight's hearing is a continuation of the hearings for Farm Road Homes on Farm Road in Sherburne. Bob Murchison, you're probably out there. I just don't see you on my screen. Can you speak up? There he is. Oh, Bob, you're muted.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. All right, so let's get a couple of administrative matters out of the way first. One is that this is the last scheduled hearing on Farm Road unless we choose to extend. Have you and Mr. Haverdy had a chance to discuss extension timing, Mr. Murchison?
No, I was interested. I'm sorry, is someone else speaking?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was interested in kind of seeing how the festivities went tonight, but I'm perfectly willing to discuss an extension if you request one.
Okay, we are going to request one, and Jeannie, you are in charge of making sure I don't forget to set a date before we pop off.
The answer is yes, Rick. We can.
Right, right, but you want to get us out there. I'm with you.
Can I just, can I just say one thing, Rick, at a procedural, on a procedural issue?
Sure.
I mean, have you opened the hearing? It's within the hearing.
Yes, yes, we opened the hearing, yes.
Okay, I just want to say that, you know, it's now been, I think, three or four different times when I've come to these hearings, and into my email box comes a 10-page letter from a town board. It was the Board of Health on Greenwood. It arrived during the meeting, and then I never had a chance to review the letter, and the hearing was closed that night. That's pretty frustrating. Tonight, it was from Conservation.
Now, just a second. You were the one who insisted that hearing be closed that night.
No, I think you need to go back to the video. That's.
Well, okay.
But it's not important.
If you, if you think you did not have a chance to extend that hearing, we'll, we'll have that one out, so to speak. Go ahead.
Absolutely. No, I'm just asking that as a, as a courtesy, could we not be sending in 10-page letters during the meeting or five minutes before the meeting? It's frustrating.
Okay, and I'm sure that other people are frustrated too with what letters come in when, but, but, but your, but your concern is a valid one. Sending things in at the last minute is not a good way to make sure they're, get the review they deserve.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay, another housekeeping matter. A couple of people know this already, but I wanted to make sure the rest of my board members knew this. I'm up for renewal on June 15th, and I do not intend to renew. So you need to start thinking amongst yourselves about either finding a new chair or drafting a chair from within. The selectmen know this, Jeannie knows this. I've discussed staying on for a stub period as an associate or something like that, but as Dick Nixon so famously said, you won't have Rick Novak to kick around anymore. It has been wonderful at times, but it's also been 11 years. And so I'm at a stage in my life where I need to be doing some other things. So that has nothing to do with the merits on Farm Road at all. But I just wanted people, people to be aware of that. Okay, turning to Farm Road, Bob, you had asked at the beginning of the meeting that we give you some time to present a possible alternative. I hope that maybe we could do that in 15 minutes or less. Depending on the reactions to it, we might take some initial reactions tonight, but the main theme tonight is going to continue to be what it was, which is reactions to the existing proposal that's on the table as to, as to septic design and flows. And Bob, I'll ask you to cover in your presentation how much, if at all, the bedroom count and septic flows from your new project differ from the prior one, because as we all know, nitrates don't care whether they came from an affordable toilet or a market rate toilet. It's all the same, affluent. So, please.
So I, I think my presentation about the possible modification of the plan will take five minutes. It's, you've seen it, it's very simple. I'm, I'm looking to have people react. If there's no interest, I'll take it as no interest, obviously. But I thought it was, you know, I, well, I'll launch.
So, yeah, yeah, if you'd share, can you share?
Actually, Jeannie, can you just put up the, the site plan, please? I'm not a Zoom.
Okay, well, we'll figure, we'll figure out a way to get it up.
I'll get it up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie.
So, so what I would say is, and I said this in my email to you, Rick, and I, I think my email's been posted, which is great. I've listened a lot over the last six months, and, you know, I've tried to kind of, obviously, kind of boil things down. That's the way I tend to operate, to, you know, what, what are the concerns of the community? What am I hearing in terms of concerns from the, from you folks, the ZBA? And kind of try to boil those down into something that I can, I can manage. And I came up with the lack of a public water supply was a big one. We spent a lot of time over the last six months discussing that topic. I think I've been very clear. I think you've been very clear. And, you know, I recognize you haven't made a final decision on that, but, you know, it seems to me that that is something that you're, you feel strongly about. And, you know, we just, I disagree, but that's, you, you do appear to feel strongly about that. The overall density of the built environment, basically, we've obviously got single-family cottages, which are spread across really the entire area that can, that can be legitimately built on in terms of the topography and, and just kind of, the land made it very easy to think about where the, where the homes should go. I proposed this because I really liked the idea of doing 25% affordable, 75% market rate, but that the market rate homes are not affordable by state affordability standards, but affordable by real, real families to come to town and, and live in our town and bring new folks in at a price point that doesn't exist today. You, you pretty much can't buy anything under a million dollars. There's a few things here and there, but not a lot. This would be a fair amount of new construction, smaller homes that would be sold for under a million dollars. And to me, that was a goal of mine, and I read it in the master plan. I read it in the housing production plan that the town wanted small New England cottages as a way to diversify housing options in town. And so that's why on this property, I came up with this project. Obviously, you know, next Wednesday night, we're going to continue a discussion about a very different type of community over on Route 16. And that's because I thought that property lent itself to that and not to New England cottages. So I tried to be really thoughtful about these different proposals. So, but the fact is, is that when you do New England cottages, especially for the most part, single, well, single families and duplexes, obviously, in this case, you cover a lot more ground, a lot more of the ground, and you end up with a lot more impervious surfaces. You know, you just take up a lot more space with single-family homes. And, but that, I really thought that was kind of a, a proposal that made sense on this land. So I've heard from you guys that are, you know, from the community certainly, that it's too much density. You know, there are the homes up on Farm Road. I heard people complain about having homes, you know, we have seven homes that we're showing right on the front edge of Farm Road, and I'm hearing people don't like that. And, you know, you guys have spent a lot of time many months ago, not, not much recently, but a lot of time talking about a deed restriction, which my counsel has explained to you, we believe, expired long ago. You have further questions about that. I understand that, but I, I hear that. And then lastly would be the size of the septic system. So as I kind of sat back and thought long and hard about it, I said, well, I know how I can resolve. And then the one thing I didn't mention was the seasonal flooding that goes on around that pond. And we saw that to the extreme, this particular winter, obviously. And we've talked about that and what that means for kind of where we can build. And so that's the kind of the list of things that I heard from you all over the last six months. As I thought about it, I realized, well, I can't, if I go in a different direction, I can't provide New England-style cottage homes anymore because the density doesn't work. You can't cut the number of New England-style cottage homes in half and still have the project work, given the site costs. So that just doesn't work. But I thought there is a way that I can actually solve most, if not all, of kind of what I've heard from folks. And that is just what I'm showing you now, which is instead of New England-style cottage homes, we go to an apartment building. No, I know there's an allergy to apartment buildings in town. I get that. However, what I would point out is that this building is tucked, as laid out here, is kind of tucked way in the back. Will you see it from Farm Road? Yeah, you'll see it on the end, and you'll see it 600 feet away. But it's a heck of a lot, you know, kind of out of, out of sight. And I'm guessing that folks might like the aesthetics of this better than, than the New England-style cottages. I don't know. I hope to hear more about that in the next few minutes. But one important thing about this design that I'll point out is the public water supply. We have talked so much about a public water supply. I have studied it. The engineers have studied it. And we have concluded that there is one place to put this, a public water supply on this 14 acres, okay? And it's exactly where you see it. You see the four wells dotted around to the west of the pond and to the, to the west of the floodline. That's, that's the only place that is physically possible to put a public water supply on this property. I know I've heard people write to you and say, oh, it can be put up here and put up there. That's just simply not accurate. There's one place, and this is it. Now, you can see, as soon as you do that, you wipe out, you know, 70% of the New England, the possibility for the New England cottages on the, on the site. So that, that's your public water supply that everybody has been very, very, felt very strongly about. That's what it looks like. Now, the good news is that that public water supply actually pushes the driveway for the, for the community pretty far to the west, as you can see, because we have to leave. I mean, you, most people, I think, on the call understand that there has to be a, basically, a no-touch zone around, and it's a little bit driven by the number of wells. If you put more wells, the circles are smaller, but then they have to be a certain number of feet. Anyway, this is a rough idea, and we might be able to tweak it a little bit here and there, but this is pretty much what a public water supply would have to be, excuse me, on the site. It pushes the driveway pretty far to the west. It also, whoops, we lost the.
Sorry.
No worries, no worries, Jeannie. It pushes the driveway pretty far to the west. And the nice thing is it, it completely takes care of the flooding concerns, I think, that people have in that the driveway and the built environment are nowhere near the seasonal flooding that we've identified. The efficacy of the stormwater management design is significantly, it made significantly less complex. We have a lot less impervious surface, as you might imagine. And we have a lot more place to put the stormwater in this new, in this theoretical new design. Let's see.
Rick, can I share my screen? I can bring it right up.
Oh, yes, please, Marion, if you're willing to be the sharer.
Great, thank you.
I have it here. It's totally, Marion, if you want to do it, fine.
Oh, you got it.
Somebody, somebody's got it. There we go.
That's great. Thank you.
Can we back it down one click on the Zoom to like 80%, so we can sort of see the whole project? There we go. Thank you. Okay, please keep going, Bob.
Okay, um, let's see, where was I?
The roadway.
Roadway, stormwater. Oh, so the, and, and the, the deed restriction issue, as you obviously know, this building would be owned by one entity, and the 65 Farm Road would not in any way be subdivided in that, in that scenario. So, and then lastly, the size of the septic system. And I don't know, you asked me, Rick, in, by email, would the number of bedrooms be the same, more or fewer? It would not be more, and it could be modestly fewer, but we're not talking about a dramatic reduction in bedroom count.
Okay, so maybe for the purposes of tonight's discussion, to the extent that people are thinking about this project, but also what we're going to hear on septic tonight.
Sure.
Let's assume there, for, for, at least today's discussion, they're at least similar. And of course, it sounds like this building isn't really fully designed, but.
Correct.
It, it, it looks to my amateur eye like it's probably similar size, scale, scope to your Washington Street project.
Yes, except it's fewer homes, right?
Fewer homes.
Maybe more, maybe more bedrooms in those fewer homes, so.
Got it.
You know.
And.
Can't tell you exactly right now.
Right, and, and as a rental, even though it would only be 25% affordable by state affordability standards, that would all count for SHI purposes, I think. Do I have that right?
That is correct. That is correct. And, and, and by the way, Rick, it could be 100% affordable, that, you know, could be either one. But you're right, you get credit, or you, we, the town, get credit.
The tower.
For 100% of the homes in the SHI, which I will point out, would provide the town with a two-year safe harbor.
Okay, and. Is Paul Haverdy on, or has he discussed?
Paul is not here tonight. Tonight, I'm represented by Paul's partner, John Silverstein.
Okay, well, John, let me ask you this, and you definitely get a free chat to say, we haven't thought that through yet. But I know one of the questions is going to be, well, so is this the same project? Is this an amendment midstream? It's quite different than the project eligibility letter. Has that been thought through, or is that all sort of steps down the road?
So.
Hi, Jonathan.
Oh, good evening. Sorry, Jonathan Silverstein for the applicant. So it is the same project. We would go back to mass housing and clear it with them, in my experience. They would probably take a look at that. They possibly could issue a modified eligibility letter. But oftentimes, they won't bother, and they'll just say, this is fine with them. You know, I want to be clear, at this point, this is not a request to modify the project. I think Bob is really just trying to gauge the board's temperature. And if this is something that the board is, is interested in, then I think the question would be, you know, does he move forward and, and make this as a formal proposed modification to the project?
Understood. So just, just to repeat that in sort of, in sort of plain English for everybody. There's no formal proposal to change the project now. This is an idea that the applicant is tossing out informally, but their existing project that's on the table remains on the table as submitted.
That is correct, yes.
I see Bob nodding, so I must have gotten it at least close to right.
Yeah, I mean, Rick, Rick, as I said at the beginning of my comments, I've been listening. I'm trying to, in good faith, come forward and throw some ideas around. Maybe that's not how this always goes, but I thought it'd be worth at least trying to have kind of an open conversation with folks, with you and with the neighborhood.
There's nothing wrong with that. All right, other board members first. Initial, initial reactions, and you don't have to have any. And maybe, Marion, can you stop sharing the screen just so we can see the gallery a little better?
I can do it. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Whoever was sharing, please stop. Okay, fellow board members, any initial reactions before I toss it out to everybody else in the call? We're not going to spend all night on this, but just, you know, if you just totally, totally, totally love it, say that. You've got some concerns, and say that. Jonathan?
Well. Rick, this, this really follows the question you just asked the applicant. Is this a new or a modified project? It has not gone through the, the process that the original project went through, didn't get the comments from the town. And so this seems to be kind of jumping ahead too many steps to me.
Okay. Zach or Todd, any initial thoughts? And you don't have to have any.
I guess what I would say at this point is, it certainly appears to be materially different. And much of the discussion that we've had so far may or may not be wholly applicable. It's hard for me to say, and it's not my place to say. And then the other thought that I would have is, I also don't think it's my place to say whether we prefer apartment buildings versus ownership units. I don't think that that's grounds for us to, to discuss and apply merits to. So it feels quite different and quite new. That may or may not be a good thing. But that, that's kind of what I'm thinking about it right now.
Yeah. Zach?
Yeah, I mean, I think first, I think, you know, I just want to say, you know, thanks to, thank you to Bob for, you know, hearing the community. I think that's very thoughtful, and I, you know, you know, this town presents a lot of challenges to build. And I think that, you know, you're obviously trying to thread that needle, so I think we appreciate that. I, I echo, you know, Todd's perspective in particular. I don't think it's our opinion that matters, you know, more so. I think it's, we evaluate the weight of others' opinions. And I think, you know, we haven't had the, the benefit of others' opinions, you know, in, in the same process as Jonathan mentioned as well. So I think that, to me, means that we're a little premature in, in discussing this.
Okay, fair enough. And I, I kind of should share the same view you guys do of, well, that's different. I don't think anybody, or I don't recall, we can go back through the tapes. I don't recall hostility to the cottage design per se. Having a single owner would, I think, subject to the thoughts of the other lawyers on the call, assist in the no subdivision problem under the deed restriction. And the rest of it, it's, well, we'd have, we'd have to look at the design. We need, we need more detail. So I'm not ready to weigh in on one way or another either. So having said that, and trying to move along, Dennis Murphy, you are the fastest electronic hand, so you're up. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I, I put my hand up just because you asked the question that I, I happen to know well, having litigated this issue against Attorney Silverstein's firm just recently. The project eligibility letter does refer on page three to approval being limited to the development of 32 home ownership units. So the current project eligibility letter does not cover rental. Under the regulations, which I'll cite, so in case you want to look them up, any change in the type of building or in the tenure of ownership is considered a substantial change that would trigger a new P E L process that would have to go back to mass housing. That said, there are two sections that 56.0511 is, changes while the project is in a public hearing at the ZBA. And that refers you to the examples in 56.074C4, which gives as examples of a substantial change, just what I said, a change in the building type. And it actually says, for example, garden apartments, townhouses, high-rises, or a change from one form of housing tenure to another. And I believe both of those qualify. So while I too welcome the, and appreciate that the public comments are being considered and alternatives are being considered, I think this has to remain an informal proposal because I don't think it's properly in front of the zoning board until it goes through the regulatory process of a new project eligibility letter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and forgive my feeble mind, but wasn't there a recent case on Nantucket about this topic of changing the project around and?
Yes, that, that was my case, and Attorney Haverdy was on the other side of it, so we're, we know each other.
You do know better than I do, for sure.
Yes, I'm happy to provide a copy of that for the boards.
No, I, you know. Mr. Chair, if I could, it's really irrelevant. We're not, we haven't, that was a totally different posture. That was Housing Appeals Committee approving a change to a project post-permit denial, or approval, rather. And this is not what we are proposing.
Okay, we just wanted to gauge. Mr. Silverstein, let me respectfully but firmly, firmly disagree with you. It is relevant, but it's not before the board yet. I, I think, I think we all agree that what's on the table now is just a possible change. And I think we all need to be aware of that possible change might have to jump through some hoops to be approved. And, and you, and you and Mr. Murphy see, see the, the size of those hoops and the likelihood of clearing them very differently, and that's fine with us.
Yeah, and I, I just, I wanted to make the point that all we're trying to do, and it's very common that projects change a lot during the hearing process in response to comments from their community. And we're just trying to gauge whether or not this would be something that there's an appetite for us to pursue. It's an informal conversation.
So. Very, very clearly so. Thank you. Mr. Fennell?
Good evening. Arthur Fennell, 58 Farm Road. The applicant mentioned that the driveway would be pushed pretty far west or something kind of unspecified. Can he be more specific as to where the driveway would exactly wind up? Thank you.
And I think, Arthur, based on the chat, Bob, to the extent you can do it, was looking for how far west, you know, 50 feet, 100 feet, sort of that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think you can, if you bring the drawing back up, you might be able to see in the background the existing. Well, if you bring it up, I can describe exactly where it is.
But how about this? Whose, whose property would it be in front of or across from? That's, that's really what I'm getting at.
I think he's talking about the, the curb cut, Bob, as opposed to the driveway.
Arthur, the curb cut, is that what you mean?
Wherever it intersects with Farm Road, if that's the curb cut or the driveway, if, if that's not moved, then disregard.
No, no, that is moved. That's the point. No, so currently, the curb cut being proposed is along the, the right-hand side of the, of the road going in is along the 50-foot setback line to the wetlands. Okay, it's, yes, it's along the 50-foot setback line to the wetlands. And then another 50 feet over is the existing driveway. And then the new driveway, I don't know the exact number, so please don't hold me to it, but it's another 50 feet to the, you can see it on the plan. You can see exactly where it is.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the plan. It's, it's a relative design detail that is one of hundreds that we'll have to look at.
Yeah, but it's well to the left, Arthur, of the existing dirt road going in there.
Do you mean the dirt road that's on the ground today, the driveway?
Yes, correct. It's to the west of that.
All right, thank you. Marion Neutre, you were next. Oh, I'm sorry, Marion, Marion, can you stop for just a second? Does any, does any local board, say perhaps the Board of Health, want to come to order? Like the Board of Health?
Yes, yes. Darryl Beardsley, Board of Health. We do have a quorum, and thus, let's see, it's 7:30, 31 PM, and I'd like to call the Board of Health meeting to order on this March 20th, 20th. And so we'll announce ourselves as present. Darryl Beardsley, present.
Julie Drive is present.
Diana Hook, present.
Rebecca Honeywell, present.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Sorry for the interruption. Eric Johnson, Select Board doesn't need to come to order. Uh, Eric Johnson, uh, uh, select board doesn't need to come to order, do, or do you wish to?
I don't see it on a, on the participants here. Um, anyone's name, but I'll just call out, is anyone here other than Marion or myself? Is anyone under another name or anything like that?
Disguise.
It doesn't sound like we have a quorum. I didn't see Jeff, so I took over his chair and it doesn't seem like a quorum, so I think we're safe.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Eric. Sorry, sorry for the delay. Marion, you're up.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I thought that, uh, after all, this discussion I think is totally valid. Um, I'd like to at least make a first pass at responding to what Bob was actually asking. Uh, you know, what? What's our initial response to this new plan off the cuff? And we won't be held to this in any way, I assume, Bob, uh. But I want to just make a couple of comments that I think, uh, uh, Bob deserves some credit for. One is. The footprint is much, much smaller. The, uh, building is restricted mostly to an area that I know is already clear. Um. Let's see, what else? There were a couple of other things. Well, the, the whole impermeable surface is much, much less. Uh. And, uh, it has those advantages, plus it gives us a hundred percent affordable. And it's workhorse, workforce, work, workforce housing. As well as, uh, truly affordable. So I just want to, uh, acknowledge that an effort has been made here and I appreciate it. Uh. And, uh, all the rest, the water septic, we're gonna have to dig through that, of course, in the future, but. I just wanted to say something about the overall response that I had to this plan.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Um. Uh, we can spend a couple more minutes if people have, uh. Overall responses, uh, that they, that they want to weigh in with now. Obviously, this is just preliminary. Nobody's bound by anything. It's just the developer asked us for his feedback and if you have. Current feedback, um, he, he'd like to hear it and probably the rest of us would as well, so. Uh, I don't see up other, other hands up. Um, wait, Meredith Waslawski.
Hi, I, I just wanted to add, there was a little bit of discussion. Um, by text, we, we thought if an apartment building were put in Sherborne. You know, the septic system needs to be discussed and all of that. But if an apartment building were put in Sherborne, that would be a much better siding for it because. That kids could get to the playground more easily, you could get to the town center more easily. It would be a much better place for people who might. Need, you know, might not have easy access, especially for the kids, to get to, to amenities, playgrounds, things like that.
Yes, thank you, Meredith. Thank, thank you, Meredith. The one thing I'll also tell people is the kids could walk to the Pine Hill School through the, uh, town forest trails.
Right. Uh, Meredith, were you meaning to contrast this location with Washington Street or another location?
Well, I mean, people could make that inference, yeah.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Michael Lesser.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street. I agree with all the previous comments and appreciate some of the changes and I guess. Probably for a lot of people, it'd be just matter of whether. The economics change enough that you could significantly reduce the, uh, septic loading and water use. Um, is really probably going to be maybe the bigger hurdle to this, uh, going forward. But otherwise, there's lots of improvements. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Deb something. Uh, you're muted, ma'am. Deb, you're muted.
Unmute. All right, um, I apologize. I wasn't here at the very beginning and of course.
I'm sorry, can, can, can you just say your name and where you live?
Ninety-seven Hollis Street, Debbie Demaro.
Hey, Deb.
Um, I, I apologize for not, I think I got in here a little bit late, but I, I didn't know if the number of units had changed or the. Uh, is it gonna be a two-story building that you can see from Farm Road? I know it's proposed.
I, I don't think Bob gave detail on that. I, 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 I speculated. And he didn't immediately overrule me that it might look a lot like his other buildings.
I think that's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, so, so, well, say Washington Street. Um, you know, I think, uh, order of magnitude, size and scale of the Washington Street building. Is that, is that fair, Bob?
Yeah, that's fair, sure.
Okay.
Is there a map of that?
Yeah, 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 yes, if, if you, if you go to the town website and look under.
Okay, okay, I know how to do all that, okay. Um, uh, I apologize again, um, that's my neighborhood and I'm really concerned, really concerned. Really concerned about water and wastewater. Everywhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, thank you. Um, Daryl Beardsley, I think you are next. Deb, can you lower your electronic hand, please?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, are you looking to match this? Actual building to the septic. Size.
Well, what, what, what Bob and I discussed, and he can tell me if I got it wrong, was that for purposes of tonight's discussion. Which was going to be geared towards the, uh, septic outputs for the prior Farm Road proposal. That we'd assume they were the same for purposes of discussion so that we could keep moving ahead. And get some of the, uh, scientific pluses and minuses. Obviously. Your board, among others, would need to look carefully to make sure it actually was the same.
Okay.
All right, Mary Moore.
Uh, thank you, Rick. Mary Moore, forty-nine Farm Road. I just want to make a comment, um, to address the comment that was made by the applicant about the late. Posting of things. This, this conceptual plan was posted on Monday at three thirty. Uh, just a two, day and a half before this hearing. There has been hours and hours and hours spent by volunteers and boards and experts and lawyers. Preparing for assumptions.
Mary, Mary, I, I hear you, but I, I think we could all spend. Many, many nights complaining about the timing of, of submission of other things by other people, so. A- a- as I noted for the record. Bob's, uh, dismay with how town people posted things, I, I note yours. But I really don't want to spend, uh, air, airtime on it because I, I, I think it would be. Could go on for a long time, it would be very unhelpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate the point from both sides. Um. Brian Moore. And only if it's not about who posts what when.
No, sir, it's not. Uh, Brian Moore, forty-nine Farm Road. I think we should all just take this conceptual plan. And when we hear about the other issues related to septic, stormwater. And, uh, those type of items specifically tonight. This, our time would be better spent talking about those issues because essentially we're talking about. The same septic discharges and stormwater discharges as to where they are now in the existing plans. And, uh, I'd like to move this forward. I'd like to move to vote if we can.
So, okay, well, we're, we're not, we're, we're, we're not moving any, anything to a vote. Um, but, but I.
To the next.
But I, but I, but I, but I agree, it's time to turn the page on, on, on the new, new plan. And let's move to what was our original agenda.
Rick, can I just correct a factual, uh, issue with Brian's comment? Uh, Brian is right, obviously, that the, uh, the, uh, the septic for, uh, would be similar. Uh, but it's not right that the stormwater would be similar. The stormwater would be significantly less complex. I mean, that's just.
Okay. All right. So we have a lot of, um, a lot of people to hear from tonight.
Uh, can I just give you one more piece of information as we?
Last, 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 last one, go ahead.
Just, I just want to tell you that my engineer is unable to be with us tonight. And I, I know that in your original, uh, uh, proposal. Uh, tonight, you wanted to move forward with, uh, regulatory boards. Comments and the peer review, so I didn't think it was critical that he's here. He has family stuff going on. Um, and he can review this, obviously, to hear all of the things that folks have to say tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that he's not here, so thank you.
We, we, we will not take his absence of commentary as complete approval of everyone else's inputs.
Fair enough.
Okay. Um. All right, um, Steve Booley. You have been waiting patiently for quite a while through a bunch of submissions submitted at various times by various people. And we're not going to have any debate about the propriety or impropriety of any of that. Um. Are you in a position, assuming that the, what's in front of you is the existing plan? Not this new apartment building, but the, but the, the so-called cottage homes. Can you tell us what your group as our peer reviewer thinks of? This septic and stormwater, but particularly the septic and particularly the nitrates issue with the septic, because that's where the, um. Uh, where the manure hits the circulating device, so to speak, on, on this project.
We, we can, Mister Chairman, yeah, we, we, we reviewed the. We re- reviewed the material that was submitted, you know, along the way, the past few months. Uh, we finally received all, all, all the material we needed to do the letter. Um, we, we did provide the letter last Friday, um. Related to stormwater issues, uh, ma- many of the basins.
Do you, do you want to put your letter up and, and they can show us that have on screen the parts, but as you're talking us through it, just so people can be reading it? If you can do that easily and if not, just give us the narrative.
I can, but I have all notes in my, my letter, so, uh. I don't really want the public seeing that, but, uh.
All right, all right, yeah, I have the same problem all the time. Keep, keep going the way you wish.
I can, I can pull it up. I'll pull up a different version. Oh, Jeremy has it, okay.
Oh, Jeremy, okay, Jeremy, thank you. All right, so tell us where to go, Steve.
Jeremy, if you could scroll down to the stormwater section. Believe it's right after the site, site comments. Okay, good. Um, all right, so, you know, starting off, you know, we, th- th- there was a, some revisions to the, to the, to the stormwater plan since our original review. Um, you know, most of the basins stayed in the same spots, you know, some of them were, were deepened, which, which actually caused, caused some issues. Uh, with, with separation to groundwater. Um, and that was our, our main concern was, was basins A, B, one and B two were all within two feet. Of, uh, seasonal high groundwater, which does not meet the, the mast D E P standard. Um. So that, that, that was our main concern wi- with, with the stormwater issue. Um, the, the applicant did provide. You know, kind of addressing the, the groundwater breakout issue into Farm Road. They did provide a swell along the front with, with kind of a cutoff. You know, a cutoff trench. Um. But, you know, for the, for the most part, the, the, the analysis looked to be. Okay, from a, a stormwater standpoint, um, just outside of those issues with the groundwater. And a- as, as everybody knows, the, the, you know, understanding the groundwater on this site is, is the biggest concern. Um. And that's item twenty-two was, was talking about, talking about that, that item.
Okay, so. Not to put words in your mouth, but. Um, are you satisfied based on the materials in front of you that items eighteen to twenty-two are resolved in your view? Or am I misreading you? Don't, don't let me misread you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we wrote a lot here, um. Yeah, for, for, it, it doesn't seem like any, like there were some, some revisions that we requested from the applicant. It doesn't seem like those revisions would, would cause anything to be. Um, I guess, un, unapprovable. I, I think that the project is good from that standpoint.
I, I'll rephrase. If the applicant makes the changes that you requested in items eighteen through twenty-two of your letter. Then you would be comfortable.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Um.
Great, thank you.
And then moving on to item twenty-five, again, this is, this is going on, you know. Which, which method was used to, to, to determine recharge rate from the, from the basins? It wa- it wasn't clear in the report. You know, which specific method was used. Um, Mast D E P has, has several methods that are, that are acceptable. Um, and i- explicit that, you know, only those methods can be used. Um, so we asked that the, the applicant confirm that. Um, and it was not clear, clear in the report.
Okay. But, but it sounds like, if I'm hearing you correctly, you think it's likely that there isn't an answer they could give you, uh, we used method X Y Z and you'd say, oh, okay, good.
Yeah, they, they should be, yeah, they should be able to provide that.
Okay, got it.
And if one of those methods weren't used, then, you know, obviously we can't.
Yeah.
Accept that, and that, so, yeah. Um. And then most of our other comments related to stormwater were either. You know, related to those items. Or, uh, could simply be, could be dealt with by, by the applicant.
Uh, okay.
You know, w- we do like the design, how, you know, a lot of the basins are split, split out across the site. Um, that's, that's typically what we like to see. You know, it helps manage, it helps manage the stormwater in a, in a, in a better sense. Um, you know, Bob was right in saying, you know, that, I mean, this, this project is dense and these dense projects are treating. You know, treating stormwater is, can be very difficult, especially during construction to, you know, manage, manage all that, so. Um, you know, it, it will be tough, but, you know, I think it, you know, it is doable. Um. And then item forty-one, if you want to scroll down to forty-one, Jeremy. Uh, the basin A continues to be, it's an infiltration basin. And it continues to be within, you know, fifty feet of a slope that's greater than fifteen percent. Um. And that's, that's explicit in the, in the handbook, the Stormwater Handbook. Uh, when we met in January, uh, Shang and I had spoken about that and. And we, we thought he would be converting that to a detention basin. Um. And it didn't appear that that occurred, so, you know, we noted that in, in our view as well.
But if the Shang were on this call and he said, yeah, I can make that change, you'd say. You'd, at that point, you'd be happy.
Exactly.
At that point, yep, okay, got it. And he's not, and he hasn't said that, so. I'm just, I'm just trying to, to pu- pu- put parameters around things.
Exactly. Um.
Okay.
And outside of those, those items, you know, the stormwater looks, looked reasonable. Um. Erosion, moving on erosion sediment control. Uh, this is kind of linked with stormwater, um. The, the project is very dense and, and managing this site during construction is going to be difficult. Um. Generally, when you're, when you're constructing these projects, you're, you're building, you're, you're draining, your stormwater infrastructure at the front end of the project. To help manage that, but. The, the handbook and D E P specifically says that, you know, you can't use your, your post-development. Stormwater infrastructure to manage construction term runoff. Um, there, there are ways to manage it, but, you know, we just wanted to note that, you know, there's gonna have to be a specific. You know, once the, the, the SWIP is developed, that it's gonna be. Imperative that, um. You know, construction term period runoff is, is properly managed and not sent for those post-development, uh, basins.
Got it. And then I, and I. Sorry, and I read the thought balloon over Bob Murchison's head that says, of course, if we go with the revised design, the apartment building. All of the stormwater erosion control will change completely because it's a different site. Right?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think the apartment building drastically reduces the stormwater impact from the.
Yeah, 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 okay, right, good. Keep, keep going. We're talking about the, the, the original proposal.
Yep, uh, erosion and sediment control, item forty-eight. Um, the applicant noted, you know, it was about eleven, almost eleven thousand yards of material, um, coming out of that site. Um, that is a lot of material, so we had asked, you know, we recommended a condition for construction management plan. Um, you know, and that helps alleviate, you know, issues with, with the neighbors and, and kind of impacts and nuisances as part of construction. Um. And that's pretty much it. I have for, for stormwater and erosion sediment control. Um.
Tell us about septic.
Uh, septic. I do have Peter Dillon with me this evening, uh, who can kind of go through. Um, his, his review of the, the septic, the hydrogeological items of the, of septic design.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Steve, Steve, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off on public water supply, but I'm assuming there was nothing new there.
Uh, no, we, we had recommended, um, you know, the, the project did receive the preliminary approval from D E P. Uh, we recommended a condition requiring that the applicant provide, you know, the, the final determination letter. For that, um, as well as a safe viable water supply, uh, prior to any issuance of building permit. Um. And that, 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 that was, that is consistent with how, how things have done in the past. Uh, so we, we were comfortable providing, uh, recommending that condition.
Yes, okay. Mister Dillon.
Yeah, good evening, Pete Dillon. Um, so, yeah, I looked at the, um, the, um, the septic relation to groundwater and the hydrogeology. Um, they, I'd met with DeShang earlier, uh, in December. Um, they I'd met with DeShang earlier uh in December. Um, and we talked about ways that he could probably. Improve on on his mounting calculations. And um, and so my comments are based on on that. Um, the bottom line is is that. That because this project um is. Considered aggregate under under Title V. Um, you need to do a nitrogen loading analysis. Uh, because there's onsite wells. Um, and so in going through that, um, I that's what I compared all this to. Um, and um, I looked at the uh um hydraulic conductivity values that he. Uh, that he uh used. And I'm down a little bit further, if you want to go down a little bit to fifty-eight, I think. Uh, all right, so, but basically he used uh soil uh analysis, uh which is a regular thing done by. By D E P to uh determine hydraulic conductivity in the Vado, so, which is basically the unsaturated area. Um, however, I I I I think that he needs to go back and take a look at the formula that he used. Made a recommendation, um. Uh, on a publicly available spreadsheet that would help him out. That uh that. Basically gives you the conditions that your soil curve as in order to get a good hydraulic conductivity number from from soil particles. Um, so that needs to be re- reevaluated. Um, the other thing is is that the saturated thickness, which is also very important in the mounting calculations. Uh, that. We we looked at, it doesn't look like. Um, it looks like it's much. Shallower than than what he had used. Um, and I suggested that um. That you could take care of that with a boring onsite to be sure. The bedrock is all over the place here. So knowing exactly where that bong of the aquifer is. Um, is important. You could do that with a boring or, um, there is a um, uh, the D E P mast D E P well viewer, which. Which basically cites some of the um other wells that are in the area that have depth to bedrock. I checked it out and they're there. So, um, that saturated thickness needs to get reevaluated, so. Once that's done, um, you know, the 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 groundwater mound needs to be reevaluated, um, you know, there's. Some questions on whether hand push is acceptable or not, which is a type of ma- model that was used. That's actually the model that's in the D E P method. And for the most part, um, will produce similar uh mounds when you have very simple information like here. Um, to uh to determine the groundwater mound. Now, the groundwater mound is really um just a piece that goes into the nitrogen loading model, but it's necessary. Uh, the other thing is is that, uh, he had used a constant head head boundary, and I. I know I'm gonna be boring everybody at this point. Um, which uh D E P does not usually use, uh, but it does not allow, actually. Um, now, when I say D E P doesn't use, uh, that is because most of the mounting that is done for D E P is but with. With systems that are over ten thousand gallons per day with a groundwater discharge permit. Um, you know, this mounting analysis nitrogen load loading is really under the. The the Sherburne Board of Health jurisdiction. Um, and um, you know, they really the ones that need to determine. What conditions that would would be applicable. Um, so you know that that point one feet um of groundwater discharge, um, uh, um. At the wa- at the uh connection of a wetland boundary, um, is fairly new to D E P. It is under 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 some scrutiny right now by a. A bunch of people that. Um, are being affected by it, so it's not specifically in the groundwater discharge per uh regulations, but that is what they use. Um, the the way to solve that, um, is simply to move the septic system back. Um, and if you've got some a different. Proposal. Uh, by making it either longer, because square systems have bigger mounds. By making it longer or pulling it back will probably solve this problem. So then again, once the mountain is recalculated, um, it needs to run through, uh, and basically. Um, you know, we determine the nitrogen loading so that at the property line, they can show that there are ten milligrams per liter. Um, you know, again. Uh, pulling the the system back makes that. Easier to do.
Yeah.
And then, all right, and then the other thing is is that, uh, and with the stormwater basins. Uh, because of the separation distance is less. Less than four feet, they need to go back and they need to look at the, um, they need to look at the uh. Um, bounding from the septic from the uh stormwater basins. Uh, and I'm suggesting because the soil absorption system and the um and the um. The uh basin A. Um, are so close together that you really need to, they're, you need to look at the the. Impact from the stormwater, um, with the uh with the um. With the impact from the septic combined, and the best way to do that would be mod flow, which I'm suggesting. I don't think they're gonna want to do that, but that's what I'm suggesting. Um, but again. Uh, you know, by changing that basin A and, um, you know. Reconfiguring the uh the septic system, you could probably make this work. And me. So that's really, that's where we're at. It could be re- it it needs to be relooked at. Um. And uh. There you go.
All right, so can I try to dumb that down into into words I can understand, and you can tell me if I'm close? If if the septic system were the only issue. Uh, for the project that's on the table, i.e. the cottage homes project. Um, and that's not the case. And if we were making a final decision tonight, and that's not the case. Your position would be. Well, we're close, but we're not there. There's some more things he has to look at, some calculations that have to be redone. It might work, it might not work. I just can't tell you for sure tonight.
Perfect.
Okay.
He said that in the beginning.
All right, awesome. Um. Anything further from Tetra Tech tonight, although I will ask Tetra Tech to listen carefully. To the other commentary on stormwater and uh nitrate loading and the light tonight, just in case you hear something, you go, holy cow. That's right. Um. But if you think, holy cow, that's wrong, you don't have to change your position. Sound fair?
That is fair, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Awesome. Well, on on the remote chance that there's anybody else who would like to speak on these topics. Mister Hill? Or maybe Mister Horstley? Mister Horstley has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
All right, uh, if I may, I'd like to share my screen. I have about a five-minute presentation I'd like to make.
Please do, sir.
And you should be seeing a introductory slide here with my name on it. Wonderful. All right, well, thank you. I am here, uh, retained by Brian and Mary Moore, working along with Hill Law. Dennis Murphy, uh, doing this review. Um, there was a question recently for me to provide some additional information on my. Qualifications, so I will just take one minute and review that. Um, I do have thirty-plus years of experience in the field as a hydrologist. Most of my work has been nationally for the U S E P A, although I've worked. Some sound in the background. I'll continue. Uh, six of the EPA regions, I've worked for about twenty different states, probably over a hundred municipalities. Industry nonprofits. Um, I have been qualified as an expert witness as a hydrologist in federal court, state court, and numerous administrative hearings. I've served on uh many uh mast D E P advisory committees. I just mentioned three of the more relevant ones. Here, the Stormwater Advisory Committee that originally put the standards together that we're discussing tonight. I'm currently serving on the Mast E P Title V Advisory Committee, which is the the septic side of that. And then finally, I do teach as a as an adjunct faculty member at both Tufts and Harvard. In graduate school and courses in water resources management, low-impact design and green infrastructure. Um, as actually, I'm glad Peter went first because uh he uh, I won't say he stole my thunder, but I'm gonna agree with him completely what he said tonight. Uh, two of the critical inputs to groundwater mounding are uh permeability and another more technical term for that is hydraulic conductivity. We will see both in some of the exhibits I'll show tonight. And the other one is saturated thickness. These are inputs to the models, both the hand push model. Which the applicant has provided, as well as mod flow, which I'd like to also talk about later. Uh, if if you get these things wrong, you get the wrong results out of the model, so these are, these are pretty important. Uh, and I, as I'll get to tonight, I think the information that's been submitted is questionable in terms of the. Values that have been used, and I should also add, well, I have the slide up. Uh, there will be groundwater mounding associated with both these stormwater facilities, as well as the wastewater facilities. And as I'll mention on my next to last slide, I think. Uh, highly likely to have so-called interference or overlap. Between those facilities, meaning one impacts the other. And uh, in my opinion, they need to be evaluated uh in concert to evaluate that. So just a couple of observations. I have a lot of details in my comment letters, which I'm not gonna spend the time to go through tonight, but. Just to highlight some of the, I think, more significant questions, and I think Peter mentioned, there's a question about saturated thickness. I totally agree with that. The uh, as I said, as it says in the top of this slide, um, the engineer has used a value of fourteen point five feet. Now, I also have trouble following the, some of the written materials, as as I think was indicated by uh Tetra Tech as well. But I'm pretty sure the fourteen pi point five feet, which is used, in fact, is not. A saturated thickness is a depth to water table. And if I'm right, this is a um. Pretty significant error. The only place I can find the fourteen point five feet is a depth of the water table. That is not saturated thickness, so. I would encourage Tetra Tech to take a look at that and see if they agree with that. But in any case, I think the fourteen point five feet is not supported. This is some of the test pit data. Now, again, saturated thickness is basically the amount of groundwater, if you will, vertically beneath the water table. And the only evidence we have of that is the test pits that are shown here. I've highlighted the deepest one, which shows a uh. Thickness of around four feet rather than fourteen point five feet. Uh, I believe it's probably more than that, but as Peter said, and I agree with him, there's no documentation provided. I also agree that the site. Is highly variable. In terms of bedrock depth, et cetera, and and depth to glacial till. So I think um some uh borings to verify this, and I would, and I did say plural, certainly more than one. I probably need borings at all of the stormwater facilities, as well as the waste, and it's probably several. At the wastewater facility to really accurately. Determine the saturated thickness, which again is a really important variable. The other one which I want to highlight is the permeability values, which I also go into. The models and uh what I've, what I'm showing here is part of the uh. The engineering report by C L W E. Excerpt figure one, uh, they have you, they have attempted to use a couple different methods, but as this says, and I'm just reading their report. Um, based upon percolation rates, um, a permeability of twenty-four feet per day. Is recommended. In fact, that's what they used in their in their modeling. Now, um. Percolation rates are simply what you do for a septic system Title V. Rather than a determination of hydraulic conductivity, in fact. If we look at the mast D E P guidance, which I think Peter also referred to tonight. Uh, this is verbatim out of uh volume three, chapter one of the Stormwater Handbook, and it says, and I've highlighted it. A Title V per test is not an acceptable test for hydraulic conductivity. They tend to overestimate it, so it's pretty clear in black and white. That the methods that's been used by the applicant are are should not be used. And there are other methods which are highlighted above here. Permeability hydraulic conductivity tests using permeameters, as it says here. Uh, that's what should be done. The as I, as we've heard tonight and prior hearings. Wastewater, groundwater is a critical issue on the site. I think even the applicant has agreed that that's the fact. So we gotta get this right, and uh we gotta use the right methods. We're gonna have the right number of borings, et cetera, and and I don't believe we have that currently. Now, you, the question of nitrogen loading has been asked. It's identified very clearly in the in the town regs. Sherburne is a town that relies heavily on private wells and septics, so this is a huge issue. Title V discusses this. Mast D E P has guidance documents on how to evaluate. Uh, and uh water quality impacts using nitrate as the as the lead parameter. And I've submitted a prior analysis, which I'm I'm showing here, which. I says, I said in my letter, this is preliminary based upon the data that I have, which. I don't have enough data yet to do a to de- detail job. I don't think the applicant does, but given what they've submitted, it looks like the groundwater flow on the site. Is westerly. Towards the downgraded property po- property boundary, which is the property of my client. Brian and Mary Moore, so we're very concerned. About any water quality impacts along that property line. Uh, the the groundwater flow direction looks pretty clearly westerly. It tracks the surface topography. Uh, I've got this blue line on here that I've interpolated from some of the test pit groundwater data. And my my black arrows indicate flow directions. The three triangles represent two, the two bought southern ones are existing septics, the larger yellow one. Is the is the approximate area of the proposed larger septic system as it currently stands. Um, I will mention here, before I forget it, another point that Peter mentioned is. In the in the applicant's uh groundwater mounting analysis, they did use, I think, again, I'll say constant head boundary. Uh, if I don't think you can see my cursor, but this is the wetland boundary here. Um, and. One of the requirements of this analysis is determine if there are water level changes in the wetland. When you set a constant head boundary, that means it can't change. So if you fix a constant head boundary in your model, we already know the answer before you run it. The change is gonna be zero because constant head means constant. So the fact that they've selected or used the constant head. Makes that analysis impossible, and I think um. This again was mentioned by Peter as well, and I think uh it's a really important point. Um, the. Blue areas on the s- on the slide here indicate what I'm calling areas of impact. This method is called out in the Sherburne Health regs. It's also. In the D E P guidance, basically what you do is you look at where you're infiltrating your septic effluent. You use your groundwater flow directions and you identify areas that are likely to be impacted, hence the term area of impact. Uh, we can see that in this indication, because of the groundwater flow direction, it's gonna flow westerly towards the wetland, towards that downgrade in property boundary. I also added a couple arrows here because part of the analysis that we can't do yet. Up at the up at the uh northern part of this slide, here, you can see I've used this hatching. To outline this large uh proposed stormwater infiltration basin. Uh, there is, that needs to be evaluated further for groundwater mounding, and I've got this arrow here that I'm suggesting. Uh, what I believe what the effect of this will be is to push. The wastewater further southerly. Uh, because I mentioned in my introductory remarks, these systems are going to over, they're gonna overlap and. Interfere and interact with each other, so. Um, the existing direction of flow is westerly towards from the septic system, but with that large. Stormwater infiltration basin to the north, it's gonna push it further south. And I just added these two blue arrows as approximate. Area, uh, approximate directions as to how it's going to direct that groundwater and wastewater. And as I've noted here, um, and again, Peter has this in his comments. Uh, mod flow is the correct model to use here. Um, the hand push model, which has been uh used, but I think improperly used. By the applicant's engineer at this point, meaning the wrong inputs. Um, is not going to be able to evaluate the interaction between the stormwater facilities. And the wastewater facilities, or in fact. The existing wastewater facilities and the proposed one. This is complex. The site is complex hydrogeologically, the proposed project is complex, there's not enough data. The model, the 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 hand push model, which is a simple analytical model. I don't believe is gonna be adequate, so again, I agree with Mister Dylan's comment that. Mod flow is the right approach. I'll just mention, mod flow is a. Public domain model. It's the industry standard worldwide, developed by the United States Geological Survey. It's routinely used mast D E P. I have several projects. Uh, where I'm working with mast D P on review where this model is used, so this is an industry standard, it's the correct model. For an application like this to get to try to get the right results. But in any case, once we get the flow directions nailed down, once the mod flows. Finished, we can then more accurately determine these areas of impact, which will be. As I'm showing here, down gradient to the west of these facilities, but it will probably change a little bit. Um, from what I'm showing you here in terms of the exact areas. In any case, we then apply the mast D E P nitrogen loading model. Which, by the way, I was also involved in helping develop for mast D E P under contract. And that model, what it does is it takes uh. The inputs of wastewater concentrations, it dilutes it with recharge from groundwater in the downgrading areas. And I have provided a prior summary of. Analysis, and again, based upon existing available information. Uh, I looked at the two, uh, what I'm calling here the adjacent lots, because they are close by. I looked at the two, what I'm calling here the adjacent lots, because they are close by, they're going to interact on the southern area, and then I have two analyses I did for the forty B project, one at thirty-five milligrams per liter, one at nineteen milligrams per liter. Some of these septic technologies do not always work as designed. So the nineteen is an estimate, thirty-five is probably a higher, more conservative end of that, so I've done nitrogen loading calculations using both. And you can see that the range of concentrations I'm getting is between fourteen point six and about twenty-seven milligrams per liter. The federal and state drinking water standard is ten. Generally speaking, we like to recommend something like five at the property boundary, because if you plan for ten and you're slightly wrong, and it's ten point two, you lose a water supply. So the state and other organizations typically recommend applying, targeting a lower standard than ten, because as I said, that is the drinking water standard, and none of these models are perfectly accurate, so you want to provide what we call in the Clean Water Act, a margin of safety. This is public drinking water we're talking about here, so the ten milligrams per liter probably should be considered closer to five milligrams per liter as a target, in my opinion, at the property boundary, given the variability of the analyses that are, that come out of these models. So I believe that is my last slide, and I will stop sharing my screams, Mr. Chairman, be happy to answer any questions that your others might have, thank you.
Thank you, sir, may I try my usual ham-handed attempt at summarizing all the engineering? It sounds like what you're saying is you think there's a lot of, my phrase would be, there's a lot of wood left to chop on this analysis as submitted by the, the applicant, there are things that you think were not wrong inputs, wrong this, wrong that. It's not obvious to you that the project couldn't comply, it's just that the materials that are submitted so far do not show compliance in your view.
I'll re, I, I would, I'd like to rephrase that if I may.
It's your words, so please.
Exactly, exactly. So yeah, I think, I think there have been some input errors here, some misinterpretations of the data that has been collected, like the saturated thickness value that I mentioned tonight. I think the models that have been done, the groundwater mounding models are incorrect because of those wrong inputs. But then beyond that, in terms of your wood chopping wood analogy, we, the mod flow analysis is, as I said, a much more sophisticated approach, and I would highly recommend that. To your last point, given the volume of wastewater, which as I heard tonight, even under the proposed planned change, that might be about the same. If this system is going to be approximately at the same location to that property boundary, they're going to have a really hard time meeting five or ten milligrams per liter at the property boundary, so I don't see, I don't see the light at the end of that tunnel. Unless they were, I think you, Mr. Chairman, or somebody said maybe move the septic system to another location further back. I don't want to put words in your mouth either, but certainly, you know, that would help. Although my understanding is the soils may not get much better heading east in terms of better, meaning more suitable for wastewater disposal, but certainly getting further away from the downgrading property boundary. The other option would be a higher level of treatment, a full-scale wastewater treatment plant. And of course, the other option is to reduce the, the volume of discharge, scale the project back to something that fits the site.
Okay, thank you. And again, Bob can speak better for himself than I can, but a wastewater treatment plant, well, it is a total game changer in terms of nitrates and, and outputs and things like that, those are not, those are not inexpensive, I think they're on the order of seven hundred thousand dollars, something like that. And therefore, a, a difficult thing to say, oh, just throw that into the developer, higher number, go ahead, Bob, speak up.
Couple million.
Okay, so not, we'll, we'll, we'll agree that it's not easily afforded.
Which, which Mr. Chairman, if I may add to that, that this may actually make the project uneconomic. Meaning the level of development here, frankly, given the site constraints, it may not be affordable to do the project.
No, that, that, that is for the, that is for the applicant to determine, we're, we're just supposed to evaluate the project as, as, as maybe it may be amended as it comes to us. I wouldn't, I would not dream of having the competence to tell them how to, how to design the project. Okay, thank you, Mr. Horst, that was very, very interesting, very helpful. Are there other people who wish to be heard on the topic of groundwater or wastewater, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Brian Moore, forty-nine Farm Road. I share some of the experiences with Mr. Dylan and Mr. Horst, I am a geologist, my credentials have been submitted to the town. Unfortunately, in this case, I'm also a neighbor, which obviously I'm a, I think it's pretty obvious I'm opposed to this project, but scientifically looking at this project for the last three years, I, I have a very brief and succinct statement, which is that the, the laws of physics and chemistry don't allow the applicant to proceed forward with the project that has been proposed for this land, given those laws and laws of fluid dynamics, it just doesn't work. Now, the applicant at the eleventh hour has submitted some other alternative, but that's not what we're talking about. And even that alternative is still discussing marginally less than the number of bedrooms that were proposed. Well, marginally less than seventeen or eighteen or sixteen milligrams per liter nitrogen at the property line means it's fourteen or thirteen. It doesn't mean it fixes the problem regardless of stormwater. So I think unless this is really reconsidered entirely as a much smaller project, which the applicant has demonstrated during the last six months, year, two years, that they're unwilling to do, there is no clear path forward to do this without endangering my well, my health, the, the health and the wells of the five neighbors across the street. And, and I'm sick of listening to people marginalize our concerns, so I hope that this board moves forward with a decision on the thing that's in front of them, and I hope they keep our concerns in mind, thank you very much.
All right. I, I, I hope you do not mean that this board has been marginalizing your concerns, I would object to that. But, but, but maybe you had a, a different intent, Daryl Beardsley.
Question, were you wanting to wait and hear from other residents, neighbors, what have you before the?
Well, I don't, I don't see other hands up, so you're invited to speak. Please, if you're ready to do so.
So rest of the board, please, time in on this. Think I'll just try to quickly go through things that the Board of Health discussed Monday night at its meeting. Provided this in writing. Longer version, but I'll start with, I'll start with the first item, and that is, since we've had concern for months about the adequacy of both the groundwater flow determination, the mounding, and the nitrogen loading analyses. We made a motion to recommend to the ZBA that a third party carry out the analyses of hydraulic conductivity, groundwater mounding, and nitrogen loading calculations, and that passed. Uh, so that assume it's going to be something you'll want to digest. Yet also asked whether it's possible for the peer reviewer to carry out the analysis using appropriate inputs and methodologies so that the board can have confidence in any decision-making it does that rely. Anyone else on the Board of Health want to comment on that?
I, I think you said that well, well, Daryl, but yes, that is our recommendation, and I'd say request to the ZBA.
I'll just mention, well, I'll take these things in order, so among the concerns that we have on why it's been difficult to evaluate this project completely. And stepping back a moment, septic systems are what the Board of Health does all the time. Mounding analyses and nitrogen loading analyses we are familiar with, but we are not doing all the time. And that's why we're looking to the peer reviewer, a third party for input. But in terms of evaluating septic systems, really the only difference here is that it's larger. But all the same principles, the rules apply, what have you. So we're, we're comfortable with all of these things. But we have requested multiple times to see the profiles for the step trenches. The system is going to consist of a series of really lines from the septic system that are following the contour of the land, and there's benefits to doing that. But we really need to see the diagrams that indicate ground surface level, where the trenches are, where groundwater is relative to that, and perhaps bedrock is applicable. And that's been provided for, I believe, and Mark, you can weigh in, all other step, step trench systems in town, and frankly, most of the regular systems, so.
That, that is correct, Daryl, that is correct.
Thank you. And besides that, we also would like to see profiles for where the septic tanks are, because again, we need to be concerned with both cover and its relationship to groundwater, because other regulatory requirements can come into play, same with the pump chamber, and for the tanks for the IA technology, anytime you're putting that stuff underground, other rules come into play. So for us to be able to review it properly, we need that. The suggestion was made by the engineer that the data is there for us to create our own profiles, however, we don't think that's appropriate for us as the regulatory authority to, uh, to be trying to diagram the things that we are supposed to be reviewing and regulating. Another matter is the, it was mentioned about the, I saw the nineteen milligrams per liter, but also thirty-five was presented by Mr. Horstley. At the moment, the system proposed is a provisional use approval for Septic Tech STAR, however, the engineered system that they're planning, which is a series of those units has not yet been approved by Mass DEP, so some of this discussion is kind of assuming possibly it'll be approved, but we've been checking with DEP and it's not yet approved. However, even if it, let's say it follows the pattern of the provisional use approved systems for Septic Tech STAR four point five. The minimum assumption that can be made about total nitrogen content in the effluent is twenty-five milligrams per liter currently, not nineteen. So that need, adjustment needs to be made in all of the calculations, but we do not yet know what it will be for the STAR thirteen point five system that's proposed. So that's just speculation, we really do need to hear about that, but at a minimum, that should be changed and rerun until we get, hear anything more on that approval. There is a recommendation from the agent regarding the Frimter method, they did talk about the Winchendon well, I know the peer reviewer looked at it, but what has often been done in the past is that we'll look at other comparison wells, just to see something that also has, shares characteristics, because Winchendon is not perfect. So comparing it to some of the other wells that are options to use as comparison wells will help make the evaluation more robust, just the comparison, see if it gives any different insight into the issues. Again, that is often done. So actually, Mark, do you want to talk about the adjustments to the groundwater data based on what you've observed?
Yes, you mentioned the United States Geological Survey well in Winchendon. That well is probably the closest well, if you're looking at till. But as was discussed with the engineer, he's trying to indicate this is more of a loomy sand, and I feel also a sandy loom, so that is, in my view, that is why I'm suggesting we look at some other wells with the same terrain and same type of soils that the engineer may feel is more appropriate, and compare those two to see what we come out with for a Frimter calculation and determination, I should say, so that can easily be done. Again, I think it'd be appropriate to go forward and look at some other USGS wells that are closer to Sherburne as well, Winchendon unfortunately is up near the New Hampshire-Bermont borderline, and we at one time had a well in Dedham, but the USGS removed that well during highway construction of Route one twenty-eight, so that no longer is available to us. But that was an excellent well to use for comparison, but we can look, and I've done this with other engineers, we look at other wells to get at least a better view of what the groundwater adjustment should be, thank you.
And then do you want to comment on just the? Well, actually, that was, we've submitted this to the, the engineer about a discrepancy in groundwater observation and monitoring pipes in terms of what was recorded in the agent field notes versus what was entered into the plans, and Mark, I believe you did not think that these, it was necessarily a critical issue in that it's a relatively minor variation, but really it's about accuracy, so that's a more of a fine point in terms of what is presented.
That is correct, Daryl, and I noted the, the deep holes that you noted in our review that was submitted. And it was submitted prior in other deficiency letters for this project, so I think it's just a matter of coordinating our data, and if it can't be coordinated or agreed to, I think the best bet would be to do another deep hole in the area, probably right about in the center of the soil absorption center with the peer reviewer, myself, and the engineer for the applicant onsite, as well as one at the septic tank location, because there was never any deep holes in that location to determine groundwater that was witnessed by myself for the Board of Health.
And then there's also a soil absorption design flow rate adjustment that is needed. Again, this has to do with soil classification.
Yeah, that's correct, Daryl, and it all follows Title V, Title V, the highest perk rate they had at this site was five minutes per inch, that can be either a class one or a class two soil. Class two gets more into the sandy loom material, which I define this soil as a loomy sand to a sandy loom. That's the disagreement so far with the engineer. It would have a factor in the design, the design would be increased based on that. For a class one soil, they would design it point seven four gallons per day per square foot. If, as I feel it's a class two soil, you design it point six gallons per day per square foot, so the system would increase in size on that. And I believe truly that this is a loomy sand to a sandy loom and should be on the, as in all Title V applications, you look at the conservative end of that. We saw this in another location on Greenwood Homes, and they did agree to look to design with the appropriate class soil after discussion, and I hope that will happen here.
Right, and so, and, and at the meeting, the board concluded that when there are discrepancies between the agent and the engineer and field observations, that two things, one, as we've seen before, Mass DEP recommends going with a more conservative assumption if, if things are on the borderline, not necessarily resulting from a disagreement between two parties. But the agent is the representative operating on behalf of the town and of the regular, regular. regulatory authority. So we don't think that using an applicant's interpretation over that of the agent would be a precedent that we want to set. And furthermore, it's been, uh, multiple decades that Mark has been doing this work, both in Sherborne and in other towns. And this is the first time that there has been a persistent disagreement over soil classification. And he's worked with a broad range of engineers, of soil evaluators, of registered sanitarians. Uh, we had a PhD professor, um, a soil scientist at one time who was working for one of the applicants, and there hasn't been a disagreement on soil classification before. So, um, Mark has a tremendous amount of experience, and it's been validated through the work in the field with others.
Okay. And Darrell, while I appreciate that, I want to remind everybody that, that in this setting, we are actually the Board of Health, and we will decide what deference to give to Mark and others, although we obviously are aware of Mark's, uh, long service and, and the qualifications of the people he disagrees with. So that'll be for us to sort out.
Yes. Uh, but I'm giving you our rationale for why this would be our recommendation.
Understood. Thank you. Um, Darrell, if you're done, I think, all right, go ahead.
No, not, not quite done. I'm still concerned about groundwater flow direction. This is a large system. It's dense, uh, large and dense discharge that isn't going to benefit from some of the assumptions of dilution that are somewhat part of Title V for these smaller systems. And getting the groundwater flow direction to be accurate, I think is important to know exactly where are those down gradient boundaries that, that we need to be thinking about. Uh, the engineer has referred to having installed monitoring wells that are per Board of Health standard, but those monitoring wells are used for an entirely different purpose, and that is for the, uh, separation between the bottom of the leaching field and the groundwater. Has nothing to do with establishing flow direction. So yes, it complied with meeting that requirement, but it is not the way to do groundwater flow direction. And so we'd like to see that done for accuracy. Uh, the, the last issue is, um.
And all of these are in your, your, your report that you just submitted to us, I think?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, so as noted earlier, the provisional use approval for the proposed SeptiTech system, it has not been approved. That is for a different subsection of SeptiTech. So we talked, the board talked about whether it was possible for us to do some sort of conditional approval of whether the system at Title V, assuming we erase the things that are not yet in our eyes meeting Title V. And it's too difficult to anticipate what the provisional use approval, um, might require of the user from DEP, because provisional use approval systems usually carry quite a number of requirements associated with them, and we just have no way of knowing what that would be. And therefore, it'd be too complex for us to try and say, yes, we think it's approvable conditional to receipt of or acknowledgement of or completion of something capable to define. Uh, and Mark already mentioned, actually, the additional soil testing for areas that were not observed and/or not tested and need to be for the particular system components he mentioned. Uh, for the board, did I miss any of our points?
Rebecca Honeywell has her hand up. Are you correcting Darrell, or do you have your own comments, which is, either which is perfectly fine?
No, I know, I agree a hundred percent, and I appreciate the comments that my board members have made. I wanted to, um, just sort of, I'm never good at simplifying because, but I.
Well, it, 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 and sorry, just a procedural point. Unless you're correcting something Darrell left out, I'm going to get, get back to you. But Arthur was ahead of you in the line, so I was going to go to him first.
Okay. I.
It's my fault. My fault.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm happy to go in whichever, whichever order, if Rebecca wants to go next, or Bob, whoever.
Darrell, you're done now? Yes?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Arthur, you're next.
Very good. Uh, Arthur, Fennel fifty-eight, Farm Road. Um, I, I'd like to, um, echo what Brian said, particularly in two respects. Uh, one is that the evident health consequences of, uh, to our, or evident health risks to our drinking water, uh, at whatever level, are so significant, uh, in this, um, circumstance. Uh, it's, it's hard to really overstate them, and given the unique, um, or unusual, uh, situation in Sherburne of having private drinking water and no other, no other available resources, uh, I can't, I can't, uh, overstate that. Uh, and the importance to me as a neighbor and a butter, uh, to the Moores and to the others, uh, who are not able to make it on this Zoom. Um, I also think that here we are nine months into a six-month process, and recognizing this is complex, there's a lot of information, a lot of back and forth. I do feel that these are, this is the sort of information we should have had a long time ago. Uh, and I, I, for the life of me, I can't understand why it wasn't available on day one, or at least before a hundred and eighty days. Uh, and I think the board, um, I, I would recommend, or I would suggest the board consider, uh, closing the hearings tonight, going with the information that it has, and the competent evidence, I think, is that, uh, this puts it well beyond the Reynolds case, the Reynolds versus Stoke case, uh, and there were other reasons that are already well documented in the record to deny the permit. Uh, and, and just leave it at that. Um, if the applicant had wished to present better information, he should have done so, frankly, already. We're already three months into an extension, and I think that's, I think it's unreasonable to the board here. I think it's unreasonable with the other town boards. The goalposts have shifted all over the place, and now we're in a whole different stadium. Uh, it's, it's time, I think it's time to put an end to this. Uh, and frankly, it's a lot of money, a lot of, uh, effort, uh, and a lot of uncompensated time that goes to people who, who, who have other jobs, who have other full-time jobs. This is the developer's full-time job. This is not my full-time job, but it's become a part-time job, as it is for virtually everybody else on this Zoom. And I think it's time, I think it's time to end that and to hold all inferences against the applicant and deny the application. Understanding, however, that the chair had said at the beginning that he was inclined to grant an extension, I would like to, uh, endorse what I think Darrell Beardsley said, which is to hire an independent expert, uh, and have that person be the one who does all of these additional or, or redos of the formulas. Uh, I think to have somebody, I think to have the engineer that the applicant hired, um, who, by everything I've heard tonight and all that I've read, um, made numerous mistakes, or made questionable choices, uh, or otherwise made errors which had significant consequence in his conclusions, to ask him to, to do a redo, I think does not give us the confidence that that sort of information that we'll get after that, uh, would be of competent value to this board in deciding things. He, given his evident expertise, and I looked at his website, he either knew or should have known that these sorts of problems existed. And I think the board should ask for somebody who is independent, that it could have confidence in, if in fact, it's inclined to extend these hearings further and get this information. Thank you.
Okay. So Arthur, a couple of quick notes. Um, I, I definitely intend to, after we hear from Rebecca and Bob, uh, discuss with my fellow board members whether we should end the hearing tonight, or whether we, whether we shouldn't. A number of people suggest that, that's up to us. So I, I hear you loud and clear on that request. Um, we do have an independent party working for the board, um, our peer reviewer, um, and i- i- unless I hear you incorrectly, I think you're saying, well, that's independent, but you'd like an additional expert in addition to them? Is that where you're coming out?
I believe that's what the Board of Health had recommended, and I think that's a good recommendation.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Rebecca, you're up next.
Thank you. I wanted to thank my board for their comments, and also Mr. Horstley, because I think he did an excellent job of explaining the issues, um, a little bit more technically. And I wanted to just remind you that, um, it's unfortunate that it becomes so complicated because we, the Board of Health, is trying to not only protect the drinking water for the Butters, but the future residents of any project. Um, and that's what makes it so complicated, because we don't want to request or demand excess, you know, spending on the part of the developer. We, we just have to think about everything, and that's all I want to say.
All right. Thank you very, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Murchison, you're next.
Sure. Um, obviously, I'm not going to comment on, um, technical issues, but there were a few things in Darrell and Mark's review that I can comment on because they're really more factual in nature than they are, um, technical issues. So with regard first to the SeptiTech thirteen point five series system that Darrell alluded to, that has in fact been approved by DEP approximately twelve years ago. Yes, it's called a provisional approval, but that's what they call the approvals of the IA technology. That's standard stuff. It was approved twelve years ago. Um, all it is, is a SeptiTech four point five. It's three of them in series. It becomes a SeptiTech thirteen point five. It's known in the approval letter as an engineered system. This has been approved, and we've provided the documentation to, I believe, both you and to the Board of Health. Um, if the DEP says, no, it's not approved, I'd like to see that in writing from the DEP, because it is approved and we provided the letter. So that's the comment on that. Um, the, as far as I can tell, your peer reviewer has signed off on the estimated high groundwater calculations, uh, and has said that that's to his satisfaction. Um, the, the use of, uh, this well or that reference well from a technology developed in nineteen seventy-two called the Frimter method, um, you know, the peer reviewer has signed off on, on that. Uh, so I'll leave it at that. Um, you know, something that I think is really important here is, um, the, the board, the Board of Health and Mark, keep coming back to the soil classification and the soil type. And this came up, and yes, Mark somehow in his notes disagrees with the engineer's notes about the soil type. This was filed with the Board of Health in a soil report. It was never questioned at the time, uh, and it was, it was filed as being loomy sand. Okay? There was a disagreement about that. Peter, Dylan, and Mark and DeShang sat down at the end of December, and they said, how can we resolve this issue? It was decided by the peer reviewer and by DeShang, and I believe by Mark, that we would go and re-dig up the soil and do a sieve analysis on the soil to determine the, um, uh, the soil classification. We did that. We did the sieve analysis. It came back, and it came back as loomy sand in two cases, and as sand in the third case. We, of course, used the conservative classification, which is loomy sand, because we got two loomy sands, and we got a full sand on the three. Now, that's what the science, we went back, and we said, we don't want to argue he said, she said, we're going to do science. We went, we did the sieve analysis, it's come back, and I don't know why the board will not let this go. And I don't know, uh, how to prove what the soil type is, other than sending it to a lab, which we've now done. So I'm done on that topic. Um, with regard to witnessed testing at the tank locations, I'm only aware that the board's regulations require witness testing for deep holes. I have, I have built many things in our town under Board of Health regulations, and have never been asked to have witness testing at the tank holes. I mean, this is, it's not in the regulations, and it's never been asked before, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Oh, and, and the other thing is, um, uh, Arthur made some comments about closing the hearing tonight. So I don't think, you know, we received the peer reviewer comments on Friday, okay? We've not had a chance to respond and do all of the things that Peter says we can and probably will. I'm not going to speak to the technical details tonight, obviously. But we haven't had a chance to respond to that and to do what Peter has asked us to do, and, and we would like to make Peters happy, right? We want him to believe this is a good system. And I think, for the most part, your peer reviewer has told you that this system can work. Not that we don't need to make changes, I understand, um, but it is a system that can work well. Um, and, you know, with regard to thirty-five, uh, using a number of thirty-five, uh, in the input from the treated, um, uh, effluent, I, I mean, I don't know where Mr. Horstley gets that. I mean, that's just a made-up number. Um, it's not from any science or engineering, it's, it's made up. But, you know, there seems to be some question about nineteen or twenty-five. That's a legitimate question, because, um, that needs to come out of, you know, what the engineering says. But to say thirty-five, it's just a made-up number, and we can't just make up numbers. And I've heard people repeatedly tonight say, oh, this is going to make our drinking water unsafe. Well, that's not science. That's not engineering. That's an opinion of somebody who, you know, I understand, it's an emotional issue, I get it. But that's not compelling, it's not science, and it's not engineering. And I would just ask, let's stick to science and engineering. Mr. Horstley came, and he talked about science and engineering tonight, and I listened carefully to him. But emotional pleas about water are not science. So anyway, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Uh, Darrell Beardsley quickly, uh, then Scott. Um, then I think after Scott, I'm going to take a break for a second, just to have a discussion with my board on a, on a procedural point that people are getting wrapped around a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Uh, just for clarification.
Darrell, go ahead, you're up. Oh. Hey, Bob, did you pull your hand down, your electronic hand? Thank you. Go ahead, Darrell.
Clarification for the ZBA, the Board of Health motion about a third-party review could include the peer reviewer. We just wanted to broaden it in case it was not appropriate for the peer reviewer to conduct the analyses. Okay? So we were not isolating that. Uh, let's see, I think with respect to the peer reviewer sign-off on, which part was that? I've forgotten now.
Um, I think he.
Mark, you can remind me. The argument was about peer reviewers already signed off on.
Well, you don't have to worry, Darrell, because, because we're not going to finalize tonight what the peer reviewers.
Okay, terrific.
Didn't sign off on.
All right. On the provisional use approval, multiple people at Mass DEP have told us that this engineered system is not approved yet, and they have told us to hold off, and they think it's forthcoming. We've asked for updates, we've asked for them to tell us as soon as it is. Looking at the document provided, uh, by Mass DEP, available off the Mass DEP website and provided by the applicant, it lists a number of units that are certified. On there is the four point five, but not a thirteen point five. So that is the distinction. So that's the engineered system, that's the, the additional thing. There's also quite a difference on, um.
Before you go further, Darrell, you know what I'm going to ask you next, which is?
Okay.
Who said it?
Contact them and get it in writing.
When did they say?
In writing. In writing, please.
I believe we have it in writing, Mark. I don't know if.
Then forward it to the ZBA.
I think I have an email from them with that.
Bob, you're, you're not on the board, so please, um, thank you. Yeah, you, you be as concrete as you can be, and if all you have is verbal stuff, get everything you can, because people want to, we, we all want accountability.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll certainly get that. Uh, yes. Um, soil determination, Mark? Perhaps you can address that better than I can? This is not just talking about one little location. It's, uh, I think it's.
But again, we're, we're not going to resolve the soil, um, allocation definitively tonight. We, we hear loud and clear a, a very strong divergence of view between the Board of Health agent and the applicant on that topic. Um, so I, I, I don't. Um, so I, I, I don't want to hear tonight unless someone has something that is absolutely dispositive on the point. I'd rather not hear further on that because in, unless the board goes a different direction than I expect, there will be another continued hearing and there will be chances for people to weigh in. But um, Mr. Horsley quickly, and then we're gonna go to the board for a few minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, but I did wanna correct and respond to a couple of things that Mr. Murchison said. Um, first of all, uh, on, on the provisional status, I, 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 just to repeat, I am on the Mass DEP Title V Advisory Committee, so I'm pretty familiar with this permitting process. There are actually three steps to permitting an innovative and alternative septic technology, this pilot, this provisional and general. General's the full approval. So it, the accurate thing is, I, 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 I think Mr. Murchison was partly the way there, but not quite all the way. I think he represented this is fully approved. It is not. It is provisionally approved. That means not all the data's in. That means we're not sure how it's gonna actually work. Uh, some people, not me, but some people call these experimental systems. I don't think they're experimental, but they're not fully approved. So just to be clear, this is not a general approved system. Again, per my earlier comments, this being a complex site, complex project, um, I would go with something that's general approved in my recommendation or, or be conservative. Now, to, to Mr. Merchant's question, where did I get my data? I didn't make it up, Mr. Murchison. Uh, the reference is Massachusetts Septic System Test Center. They're one of four places in the United States that does testing on wastewater from septic systems. That's where the data comes from. There's plenty of it. A thirty-five milligram liter frankly is, is conservative in your, uh, the applicant's benefit because the actual numbers coming out of types, Title V systems today are more like fifty to seventy-five milligrams per liter. So thirty-five is by no means an unreasonable estimate of the system. If you look at the test data on this system that's being proposed, you will see that there are plenty of samples of more than nineteen milligrams per liter. That data is available on, and I can provide the we- website later on the Massachusetts Septic System, Septic Test Center website. You will see that there's a fair amount of data that's higher than nineteen on a provisional system. Therefore, I think it's reasonable to, when you're doing your modeling, to be conservative because we're talking about private drinking water supply wells. So there is real data and that's, I suggest that we rely on that. And I would suggest rely on the conservative values, which are higher than nineteen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and now we're, we're gonna go uh, slightly different direction for just a minute. Or I'm gonna see your hand up. I, we, we will come back to board members. Um, it has been suggested to us that we not seek or agree to an extension tonight. Um, yeah, wha- what are your feelings on that? I think Bob has telegraphed that the applicant is probably gonna be interested in extending the public nature of the hearing. Um, and, and assuming he is and assuming the date he proposes is, is one that we can agree to, what are your feelings on that?
Well, uh, Rick, I for one would uh, welcome an extension of the public hearing.
Todd, Zach?
I agree with Jonathan.
Yeah, I agree. An extension would be helpful.
Yeah, the, 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 it's, that's for us. I think, I think if we cut this off now and try to rule based on what we have, we're going to look um, im- imperious and unfair. Um, and uh, that is certainly not the look we're going for. So, um, ha- having, ha- having said that, um, uh, I'll now resume and go back to Brian Moore and, and, unless Bob, you're gonna signal, signal me by, by a big shake of the head, know that there's no extension you'd ever agree to here.
No, Rick, I would like to uh, obviously reply to the um, to the peer reviewers uh, uh,
Of course.
comments from Friday of this.
Of course, of course, of course. We, we, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk about the timing of that in just a minute. We'll, we'll, let's, let, and we are uh, four minutes from time, so I'll ask everybody to be brief and limit themselves to things that are, that are new. Uh, and, and please assume that there will be further chances to speak on all these topics. Rebecca.
Uh, the additional point that I wanted to make is the justification for a third party and more testing with more data is not to waste time. It's because right now in these conditions, it's unlikely that the ability to metabolize the effluent from a septic system will change unless further data identifies land with slightly different characteristics. That would be great because then you could put in a big pro, you know, big project and it would be safe and it'd be great because it will help a lot of people in the whole town. But if the characteristics, if we don't find more data that helps that, then the characteristics don't change. And even if you move it farther from the property line, it still doesn't have anywhere to go because of the geology. And it needs to be metabolized by the earth, which are some of these um, uh, calculations help us to estimate um, how we accomplish that.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and I think I saw Brian's hand come down. No, Brian's hand is back up. Brian, very quickly, please.
Thank you. Yes, Brian Moore, forty-nine Farm Road, right next to the proposed uh, project site. I just wanted to also say that there's um, on the, when it comes to the provisional systems, I believe that there's certain aspects to use of a provisional system which the DEP recommends that there's extra reserve area and that a backup plan is in place in case the system doesn't perform as designed. And so far, nowhere in the application have we seen where that backup system would be nor what it would be composed of. And, and whatever it is, it would probably have to be larger than the system since they're already using this innovative technology to condense that leach field area as much as possible. So I think that that's an important part of the Board of Health's letter that the ZBA should take a look at and maybe the peer reviewers as well in the interim period before your next hearing. And thank you for hearing us tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Murchison.
What?
Um, I, I.
I was just gonna say to Brian, it would be really helpful in uh, what he just said, if he could provide us with a, a sighting, uh, a Title V sighting so that we can go to it and make sure that if we're not compliant, that we comply with it. I'm not aware of that and I don't think Deshing is. But if he could cite it for us, we'd appreciate it.
Oh, you, you mean, you mean not, not a, a site physical location, but a site of, of.
A citing, a citing of the, of Title V, that, that would tell us to do something that he wants us to do, that he's saying we need to do. I, if, if he cites it, I can go do it. If he doesn't cite it, I don't, I don't know what it is.
I think the burden's on the applicant.
Mr. Moore, you're not recognized right now. Um, Mr. Murchison, I'm only recognizing you for the following purpose, which is I want to ask you a two-part question which you and your lawyer can, can unpack and, and try to answer in, in ways that seem reasonable to you. Um, and the two-part question is, um, what do you want to do about your revised plan? And the second part of the question is, uh, when would you like to extend the next hearing on Farm Road Homes?
Sure. Uh, so the answer to the first question is, I'd like to contemplate what I heard tonight. Um, and uh, come back with any further thoughts that I have at the next meeting. Um, and I'm appreciative of the feedback that I received from all of you.
All right. Uh, at least in my, in my view, that's a perfectly adequate answer. Thank you. On to the second question.
Uh, for a date, is that what you're asking now?
Yes.
I, I mean, I'd ask you to, you know, propose something, Rick. I'm pretty flexible.
Okay. Okay, well, um.
I, I would think we need a few, uh, maybe three weeks. Is that fair?
Yeah, I, I, I think we need at least a couple of weeks because there's a lot to digest. Uh, there's been lots of accusations about who filed what, when and how late, and let's just say there's a lot to digest.
Sure.
Um, uh, can't, so let's see, three weeks from now is board members open up calendars, please.
Are we thinking about the tenth, something like that?
Ninth or, ninth or tenth? That's a Tuesday and Wednesday in April. Um, Mr. Fitch, Mr. Labby, Mr. McBride.
Well, uh, either the ninth or the tenth is fine. I have to wonder if that's enough time.
Uh, I'm happy to extend it, Jonathan, another week if you like.
Uh, you know, as, as I'm listening to John and thinking about it, uh, the sixteenth is a Tuesday.
We'll all have paid our taxes.
Yeah. Um, see what Monday, Monday's Patriots Day, so some people might be away, but Tuesday, the sixteenth, uh, Wednesday, the seventeenth. How do those look on people's calendars?
Mr. Chair, I would just note that is school vacation week. Obviously we'll make it work, but I don't know if members of the public might be away that week. So.
Okay, that, 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 that's a, that's a good uh, uh, good issue, Jonathan. Thank you. Um, Daryl, Julie, are you raising the same point?
I, I was just going to answer Mr. Murchison's question about where is it in the provisional use. I was going to save the back and forth and tell him now.
Sure, if you can.
Sure. So uh, within the provisional use that was submitted to us, if you go to page four, um, that is under conditions of approval subsection, special conditions for all systems. It's number five.
So, sorry, sorry, Julie, you're answering a different question.
Was a different thing.
Yeah, you, you answered a different question.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I, I think what Mr. Murchison was asking Mr. Moore for, and again, it can wait till next time, is the site for you have to have a backup system and a location.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, okay, so uh, jump, jumping back to, whoops. Daryl, you're sharing your screen and we didn't ask you to do so. Can you not?
No, I, I'm sorry, I accidentally pressed on that. We'll unshare.
Please. Please be very self-conscious.
The question you asked earlier about something in writing, we have it.
Okay, okay.
Perfect. Please send it along.
Right, I'm, 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 I'm sure she will. Okay. Um, back to when we're trying to um, extend to, um, well, we tried to go past school vacation week, then it's the twenty-third. That's, that's a wazed out, ways out. How do you feel about that, Bob? And it's your project. We are trying to be responsive to you here, but.
Um, I, I'm okay with it, Rick. I, I don't wanna go any further than that, obviously, but I.
Okay, sure. Yeah, you, you wanna, you wanna make sure we're, we're doing our job and keep moving. All right, so the, could people do the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth, board members? Does either of those states work?
So, so uh, Rick, the twenty-third is town meeting.
Yeah.
Let's not do that. That's a, that's a really bad choice.
The twenty-fourth is okay.
Twenty-fourth could be town meeting continued.
Actually, I think that's the.
No, town meetings continue to the Thursday if necessary.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, Genie, that's such a great answer. Okay, how about Wednesday, the twenty-fourth then, gentlemen?
Okay, that's fine with me.
Good for me.
Back, yes? All right, we're continued to Wednesday, April twenty-four, or I hereby move that we continue the hearing for Farm Road Homes to Wednesday, April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, seven PM. And further, that if that motion passes and is approved, that it also be deemed a motion to adjourn tonight. That's my motion.
Seconded.
Seconded, yes.
They rushed to second it. Okay, we'll.
Yeah, we both rushed. I, I, I think that Zach beat me.
Whatever. We'll, we'll, we'll score at a tie. Any, any, any further debate on the, on the moved and seconded? Oh, we're gonna pause for a second while the Board of Health closes their meeting. Daryl, yes?
I have the motion to close our meeting.
So moved?
Seconded.
Hearing no further discussion. Daryl Beardsley, aye.
Julie Dreyfus, aye.
Diana Hook, aye.
Rebecca Honeywell, aye.
All right, returning to the motion on the table to continue and then adjourn. Continued April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I don't see any. All in favor, say aye. We'll do it by roll call. No backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, motion carries for zip. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and cooperation. I'm sure we'll be getting lots of cards and letters in the meantime. Keep reading them all. Thanks. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.